Okay. Chairman Holter. Absent, she did, she did talk to me about being absent. Brittany Moore, or Ritten Moore?
Here.
Roy Campos?
Here.
Tom Dolan?
It's on.
Jeff Mattson? David Rand? He did call today too, and he, his daughter was having some surgeries, and so he wasn't gonna be able to make it. Ronald Rogers?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum?
Okay, and we need to do the approval of the minutes of October 13th meeting from 2020. Cause everyone had a chance to look them over.
Yes, I'll move to approve them.
I'll second.
Who was, who was the I? I'll second.
Uh, it's me, Brit, uh, Roy.
Oh, Roy, okay. Okay. Approval minutes have been motioned by Commissioner Rogers and seconded by Commissioner Campos. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those who oppose? Okay, we can make a motion to approve those minutes for October 13th.
Okay, Ms. Chairman, do we wanna make a motion to excuse those that aren't here tonight?
Yes, I will make a motion to excuse the two absences, and we can take a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. All of who approve say aye?
Aye.
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 All those who oppose say nay. Motion is approved to excuse the two absences of Commissioner Holter and Commissioner Rand. We have item 4A on the agenda. Staff, do you wanna explain to us what that is?
Okay, this is a rezone application for a site-specific rezone. This is a public hearing. To consider this rezone, what we have is a piece of property about three, two acres in size. It's located between basically Walmart and the Pioneer School. And it used to be a, for years, a asparagus field. And now, the applicant is requesting that it be rezoned. And the two zonings they're requesting is R3 and B2. Currently, it's zoned B2, R1, and M1. As you go through the process and look at the comprehensive plan, there are three maps related to future land uses, and all three of them have this particular property in there, it different configuration. So, the residential one has all of it as residential. The commercial has it a piece across the top, and then the industrials, future land use, has kind of a triangle in the corner. So, it was a little confusing on what exactly they meant by that. But, looking back through and talking to Commerce, cause I was concerned about this, they had no problem with us moving forward to this rezone application, cause no matter, basically, if they did it all residential, that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. You know, if they left the commercial where it was at, that would still be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and if they left industrial, that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, reviewing this application, the planning department determined that, yes, this would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, future light, land use. What the applicant is looking to do with this particular property is probably some kind of multifamily and a commercial operation. As you see in the land use table that was put in there, there is a variety of uses and zonings in this area. You have Walmart, you have industrial zonings across the street, you have schools down the street. So, it is a very mixed use area. And multifamily, from a planning standpoint, is a good use in this area in that there's walking to, to schools, there's walking to commercial, there's walking to industrial jobs. So, this area, from a planning standpoint, is one of those areas that is kind of moving to the norm that we see a lot of jurisdictions going to, to where we're not relied on the automobile, we can actually walk to places. And that when you do build multifamily, there are uses close enough to it that they can provide services, whether it be, you know, an elderly person living there, or a young couple living there with children. I think all the amenities around there. We did have some comments on the SEPA review. One was from the Port of Sunnyside, and that was concerned about industrial lands. However, they did ton of talk with the owner, and I think they kind of resolved that, they were concerned that they wanted us to look at all industrial lands, and I think just a short analysis I've done for the comprehensive plan, there appears to be plenty of industrial land. And the issue with this particular p, area that was zoned for industrial, there was no access to it. It was just a corner of the piece of property, which is something that we really try not to do is multi-zone one piece of property, cause it does create a headache, especially if you don't have a property line. But in this situation, we're going from three zones to two zones, and we do have legal descriptions for both zones, so we'll know where that line is. And when the future, when they actually do some property lines, they can put a line in there, whereas the other ones, there really is no legal description for those particular zone. Another comment was from the Department of Transportation related to traffic impacts, and they're looking at their intersection there on the freeway. And what we did in the mitigation measure is require, so in the future, when they actually do have a design for development that property, and that design does require SEPA review, that a traffic study would be required as part of that SEPA review. Ms. Chairman, that's all I have at this time. I see the applicant's representatives on there, you may wanna ask if he has any comments, or?
Okay, do we have the applicants on the line or in the meeting with us?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and state your name and where you reside?
This is Mike Height, HLA Engineering, in 2803 River Road, Yakima, Washington.
Before we get started, has I, did I miss it, or has Brit actually formally opened the public hearing?
I have, and I didn't know that we had, we had guests, so I can go back and I need to ask the commissioners, yeah. This is a public hearing to be held to discuss and receive public testimony on the Planning Commission's consideration of rezoning, 2002 rezone application, 2020, oh two. Read this right here. Change the following from low-density, R1, general commercial, B2, and light industrial, M1, to R3, and general commercial, and B2. Commissioners, do any of you have a financial interest in this issue? No?
No.
No.
Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Okay. Commissioners, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
The public hearing is now open. And Mike, if you wanna go ahead and start again, where you left off?
Would you like me to restate my name?
Please, yes.
Good, this is Mike Height with HLA Engineering, this is land surveying, in 2803 River Road, Yakima, Washington. And I'm the consultant representing the developer. And I'd like to thank the commission for hearing us tonight, hearing their application, and thank Mike Shuttleworth for preparing the application. And I'd like to add that, you know, we, we do intend on keeping a, a good commercial portion up front, you know, with similar, you know, ultimately, we're gonna short flat the the property to create like smaller building pads, you know, for, to be sold off or developed by this developer, he does commercial as well as, as residential. Similar to like what's out front of Walmart is kind of the intent, and you know, with whatever the local market will drive there. And then as far as the residential, it'll be a mixture of traditional-style multifamily apartments, mixed in with some more, some smaller garden-style multifamily, and then may, then perhaps some townhouses, and some even maybe even some single-family development, if the market drives. But all that's gonna be kind of determined as we go along throughout the development. We anticipate, anticipate this would be a, you know, 10-year development or so over, over time to be fully developed out. And, but it'll likely start with a, with traditional apartments up front, and work our way back into some townhouses and garden style. That's, that's what he's done in other places of similar size. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Um, Mike, this is Britten, I've got a question. SEPA had made a comment about the road access with industrial roads, and that that's gonna be difficult if you've got residential in there. Do you have that portioned out yet, which, which industrial you would do, and the road access on that?
Well, the industrial, that, that was kind of the argument of why we were aiming to rezone the property and, and get rid of the industrials. We didn't feel it was a very good fit for the, the area, it's kind of, it's in the southeast corner, and you'd have to travel through the residential area to get to it. And, and our proposal is to rezone that to multifamily, so there wouldn't be no more.
Okay.
But leaving the commercial portion up front, the valuable for, for, you know, retail or, retail restaurants, that type of thing, you know, the valuable portion up front for that.
Okay, great. Commissioners, did you have any other questions for Mike? Okay, if there's, if there's no other questions, we'll close the public hearing.
Before you do that, Brit, Mr. Shuttleworth, have the, there been any written comments provided to the planning staff other than as relating to the public hearing? Your mic is off.
Mike?
Yeah, only, only those comments that were submitted as part of the SEPA determination. There were no new comments.
Thank you. Mr. Shuttleworth, you don't feel we need to have a more detailed SEPA checklist?
At, at this time, no, because the, the detailed checklist will come in at the time that we actually know what kind of development is proposed. That's where you can actually determine the impacts. Looking at the rezone, you know, there could be, you know, going from A to Z, if you really want to analyze it. And it would not really give you realistic information. Whereas if you actually had a development, and it said X number of buildings, and X number of units, and X number of traffic produced by that, and these things, you can actually analyze those. If you try to analyze all the uses in the different zones, it would not give you useful information.
Okay, so there will be SEPA checklist as each segment of this goes forward?
Yes, if, if they trigger, there is a threshold such as, you know, multifamily, I think it's 20 units, commercial depending on certain sizes, once they hit those thresholds, they would have to go through the SEPA process.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, were there any other questions for Mike Height? I'll have to close the public hearing, and then we can talk, talk amongst ourselves and with Mike Shuttleworth.
No.
No, okay, we'll close the public hearing, and if we have any other questions for Mike, for staff, we can ask that or discuss other things. The only thing I would have to add is, is at a future date, when this starts to develop and traffic intensifies around there, we might have to revisit the speed limit, especially with the school. But I know that's later down the road.
Yes.
It's already 25 on the whole, on the whole length of.
Oh, it's 25, okay.
I don't know how fast you go there, Brit.
It's probably too fast. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, Mike, are we gonna make a motion on this tonight, based on SEPA saying there's really no delay to rezon the area?
It would be appropriate for you to make a, a motion. I did include in the packets on Exhibit 17 is draft findings. If the Planning Commission may wanna look at those and determine if they want to adopt those as part of their decision.
Commissioners, did you have a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion on the rezone application from low-density residential, R1, and general commercial, B2, to R3 and general commercial, and B2, for the 32.2 acre property located at southeast Lincoln Avenue on 16th and Lincoln.
I'll second.
And was that? Was that Roy?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, a motion has been made by Commissioner Moore and seconded by Campos to rezon the 32.2 acres to general and commercial, and to also B2 zone.
Question for?
All of the favor?
I have a question for Mr. Shuttleworth.
Oh.
In the conclusions of law and decision, paragraph four, I was kind of cross-referencing some things as we were going through this. Paragraph four, it says the city of Sunnyside is lead, lead agency issued a mitigated determination of nonsignificance on November 17th. Mitigation identified included that will require a traffic study for any developments on the property that require review under SEPA. When I go to the actual mitigated determination document under paragraph seven mitigated measures, it says future development of the property will require review under the SEPA process, but doesn't mention am I missing something, or is something missing?
Something may be missing, let me find that. You're, you are correct, it does say future development will probably require review under SEPA process. So, the conclusions will need to be changed, but that is the requirement that they will do the, a traffic study.
Should the traffic study be specifically listed in the determination of nonsignificance?
It, it can, but that would require us to reissue, I guess we can, we can reissue that with that caveat in there.
Mr. Height, if, if we were to to delay final approval until January 8th at our next meeting, so that we can get the documents so that they're correctly referenced each other, would that cause significant problems for the developer?
It will not, it, it will make no difference in our process. As well, our next step, as long as we know that the rezon happening, we'll, we'll work on sitting down and have to creating a, a formal plan, that we'd have to proceed with a new SEPA, you know, planning altogether, so, you know, the delay in the actual, actual rezon will not affect us at all.
Thank you.
If I may make a suggestion, is maybe we can modify the, the motion to include that a condition as part of the rezon is that any future development requiring SEPA would require a traffic study.
I, I think you guys have the ability to request a traffic study regardless, if, if you, if you want, so you may wanna leave it, leave it a little open-ended, because, because we know those, you know, as you putting on my, in, city engineer hat here, you know, we know that those are, those are some issues that, you know, you, you guys do have the freedom to require traffic studies, you know, whenever you deem necessary, because of known traffic problems. So, you might wanna leave that a little open-ended.
Well, the, part, part of the issue is that we've had some inconsistencies in the planning department over the last 15 years or so, and we have we, we know we have someone now who is paying attention, but we don't know what that will be, when the development actually goes on. Depending on how long Mike wants to put up with this.
From, from the developer standpoint, he, he knows he's gonna need to do a traffic study associated with anything he develops, so however it's worded, that it is fine with, you know.
If, if he drives down Lincoln at four o'clock on a school day, when you're actually in school, he will know that there's a traffic problem.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm just recommending we move forward, just because we didn't, weren't able to have the hearing on it in November, and we're kind of getting pushed to the, we have certain time limits by state law, and when we have to get applications processed, and I still need to get this to the city council, which probably wouldn't happen until January. And I think we can condition the approval subject to that provision being in there. If it's the preview of the count, the Planning Commission to approve this application.
If you need us to write a letter or anything acknowledging any timeframes, we'd be happy to do so, whatever you need from us.
Basically, Mike, what Shuttleworth, what you're suggesting is that we we rescind the existing second in the motion and have a new motion to approve the Exhibit 17 with additional, the additional language that, that the traffic study would be required along with any future SEPA, is that?
Right.
Recommendation?
Yeah.
That work for you, Jeff? Yeah, I'm okay with that. Are you?
Sure.
So, to Roy?
Yeah.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Are you, are you okay with removing the first motion, or replacing the first motion?
Yeah, are, are we replacing, or just re, re-editing the, the first motion?
Probably not, I'm not a Roberts rules of order.
The appropriate way would be for the person who moved and the person who seconded to withdraw the original motion and, and make a new motion.
All right, so I'll withdraw my, my motion?
I'll withdraw as well.
Okay.
Okay. Jeff, you want, you want me to, to make a new motion with the new? Or do you wanna go ahead and do that?
I, I can do it if you would like me to.
Sure, go ahead and, yeah.
I move that the Planning Commission approve Exhibit 17, the conclusions of law and decision with the change to paragraph four to indicate that any future SEPA will require a traffic study and forward this on to the council for approval with a recommendation for approval.
Okay. I'll just, I've got notes here, I'm, I'm gonna second that motion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All of the favor say nay? Okay, so we are approving the motion on the 32.4 acres to R3 and B2, and approve Exhibit 17, law and decision for the future, there will be a traffic study from SEPA, and forward this information to council for approval.
Okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the wireless communication facilities. And Mike, do you wanna tell us about that?
Hey, do you wanna open the public hearing first?
Yes. This public hearing is being held to discuss and receive public testimony on the Planning Commission's consideration of Sections 253 and 332, to provide a review process for relocating small wireless communication facilities within the city of, cities right-of-way, cities right-of-way. Commissioners, do you have any financial interest in this issue?
No.
No. Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? No?
No.
No.
Can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone in the audience from the wireless, wireless communication facility, or anyone representing them?
No ma'am, this is, this is just an ordinance, so it would be myself representing the city of Sunnyside.
Okay. Go ahead with what you have, Mike.
Okay, so this is a hearing on a ordinance, proposed ordinance that we talked about back in, I believe, September, is when we had a workshop on the ordinance. What this is, is this is kind of driven by the federal government and the FCC in that they provide fairly detailed and short periods of time for us, for us to approve what's called the new 5G system. And the 5G system is one that basically is looking at putting antennas and stuff on light poles, or small poles within the city's right-of-way. The previous systems usually were large towers, that we have a few in town, and they're taller and bigger, whereas these are gonna be basically smaller, but more of them. The idea is to provide for five G phone system, so when you're doing internet on your phone and stuff, it doesn't drop you and it's a lot quicker. But they have provided, as you can see in the staff report clocks, when we can do these things, so basically if it's a co-location of small wireless facility, we have sixty days to approve it and our current ordinance did not address those type of facilities, nor did it address placing them on the right of way, so this ordinance is proposing wording to do that such of a thing. It's using the existing ordinance and you'll see this one's a little different than the one I sent you before, because the one I sent you before didn't have the marks up, but the attorneys went through and marked it up so that they could really address what's being taken out and what's being placed, replaced with it. So what this does is it not only looks at basically the existing facilities that we permitted, the larger ones. It also has sections when it talks about eligible facilities or the small wireless facility, so it kind of separates the process for the two of them, because there probably will be some more larger towers, because they still will need to use those for on the freeways and stuff for long distances. This will kind of be like when we went through three G to four G light where some areas you'll get the five G and other areas you'll get the four G or the three G. I don't know if, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to go all the way through it or is there specific questions that the planning commission members have?
Commissioners, did you have any questions for Mike on this? And any of the new verbiage?
I do not.
I don't have any questions, Mike, either, no.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on this, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
I will move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the ordinance that updates chapter seventeen point six six to address the five G small cell wireless facilities.
I'll second.
Okay, that's right, okay, a motion has been made by Commissioner Rogers and seconded by Commissioner Compost for ordinance amending Sunset Municipal Code, chapter seventeen point six, wireless communication to be sent to city council for approval. All of the favor say yea? Or aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay, motion has been made. Okay. And I should have closed the hearing, but since we didn't have anyone here on that matter, well, close the hearings and move on to the next item. Which is the truck stop and the self laundry, item C.
Okay, this is a discussion item, what brought this up is I did have a come phone call from someone who is in the B1 freeway commercial zone and wanted to do a self-service laundry. And then when I started looking at the code, we have a definition for truck stops and we have this inner freeway commercial zone, but the freeway commercial zone does not allow a truck stop. It has a bunch of other listed uses, but by the definition of truck stop is basically where trucks can come, there may be a hotel associated with it, maybe a laundromat, some other things, so that they can come off the freeway, maybe take a shower or whatever. But we don't allow that in the zone, in fact, truck stops are defined but not allowed in any zone. I wasn't sure what the reasoning was of this, but I thought I'd ask the planning commission if they thought they would be considered amending the B1 freeway commercial zones to look at those type of uses in that zone. So I'm opening it up for discussion.
I would certainly encourage we do that.
I think it's a good idea that we open up to that, but I think that land has been sitting there, it'd be nice to be able to make use of it.
Okay. Any other comments?
What do we need to do, Mike, to, to move forward on, on looking at that and reviewing it?
What I will do is, is prepare an ordinance for you, I just wanted to get a sense whether the planning commission was interested in that or if there was some reason. You know, a lot of times you see something in the ordinance and you're not quite understanding it, but something took place in the, in the past. So the idea is to kind of bounce it off the planning commission, because they may be aware of what's taking place, so I'm not stepping into a lion's mind. I don't know if that's a political way of saying it, but it's looking at it from the standpoint that we, I don't want to do something that's already been hashed out and talked about.
Anybody else aware of there being an issue like that historically?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I don't recall anything. I mean, just not from time on the planning commission, I still remember recall it ever being a discussion in the community.
Yeah, I think, I think it was just something that they created a definition but never used it.
I would prefer to think it was just an oversight.
Okay.
Is that something that we can look at towards the next meeting that we'll have any information on or?
I, I don't know, the meeting or the meeting after.
Okay.
I want to do a little research, but I didn't want to move forward until I at least had the consensus of the planning commission, they would be willing to look at it.
Yeah, I would hate to see the community lose an opportunity for a truck stop down the road just because we didn't have zoning for it.
I, I thought that they had been talking to somebody about leasing that land for the truck stop.
Which property are you talking about, Rick?
I think it's the Munson property, is that the one we're talking about? The old Munson property?
I believe it is.
Well, this is just general talking about the, that B1 freeway commercial, the Munson property actually is industrial zone, so and I'm not part of that discussion, I don't know, that's, I think between council and some others on that one. So I really can't talk that, you know, I don't know any information on it.
Oh, so this particular one we're talking about, we don't have a location necessarily in mind.
Talking, talking about all of the B1
Right.
freeway commercial zones in the community.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and they're basically out there by the movie theater and then by, by Mart, and that area is the two big areas that are zoned to B1.
Uh huh.
Okay. Any other questions on that commissioners?
No. No.
No, okay. Any public comments from anybody else that might be listening in? Commissioners, anything that's not on the current agenda that you'd like to bring up or talk about?
Oh, I, I did have one on the item, on the discussion item.
Yeah, eventual dwellings in commercial zones.
Right.
Oh, I didn't even, I wrote it right over, I'm so sorry. We've got nine D.
Yeah.
Steph, what do you have for the, for us on that?
What, what I have in this one, I get quite a few calls and we have the B2 zone and we have quite a few residences in those zones. And the code is written such that while they can be a conditional use. But they're not really allowed. And then there's provisions about if it's damaged and so much and stuff like that, what I'm running into is people who want to improve them or maybe add a second story or porch or something like that. And really, it's a fairly difficult process to jump through when you're looking at that. Now, some jurisdictions, we did this actually in, in Meton County in the industrial zone, we said, hey, it's existing residence in the zone, you can add on to it, you can, you know, increase it, you can, you know, those type of things, as long as you meet the standards of a certain residential zone. The reason I'm, I'm asking about this is that by saying no to some of those residential zones, that means people aren't putting improvements into them, they probably still want to live there, they're not ready to go to commercial. But if we put it such that we have it now, it promotes not upgrading your home nor keeping it in good working order, I guess is the word I want to use. So I'm wondering if the planning commission would be open to looking at that particular section, or at least our commercial zones as it relates to residential and maybe coming up with some wording that says under certain circumstances, you can improve it or you can add to it, you know. Or is it the preview of the planning commission that, you know, we want to push those residential out of the commercial zones and just have commercial zones?
I think what you're saying, Mike, makes a lot of sense and, you know, probably back when those definitions were done was a number of years ago before people started talking about mixed use neighborhood type things, and that's essentially what we have in a lot of parts of Sunnyside that border on the commercial and, and the residential and you know, we're, we're talking over on Lincoln essentially a mixed use neighborhood, so I I think it probably makes sense to take a look at loosening that up, you know, like where my office is, there's you know, three or four businesses on the street and a, and a couple of residences and you know, the street behind is mostly residences, but a couple of businesses and you know, I I don't think we have the commercial demands that we need to be you know, really trying to draw a line and say, no, it, it needs to turn, turn to commercial.
And I think we don't want to discourage anyone from improving the property.
No, I, I would be more than happy to look at, at something like that.
Yeah, because we have, we have a house just around the corner from the city hall here that a lady started remodeling it and basically she hadn't got her permits, we had to stop it, but right now it's just a shell and she's not sure what she can do with it. And, you know, we don't want too many of those standing around where they become a hazard or anything of that nature, so it'd be nice to have some kind of maybe a specific on how to do it, but a process for them to do it rather than make them jump through a bunch of initial use hoops or other hoops that, you know, if it's residential on three sides, then it's, you know, why make them go through a hoop to do residential or, or add on to their existing structure?
Right.
Okay, so I think it's a consensus is, yeah, let's look at that particular issue.
I say yes.
Okay.
I think so.
Commissioners, do you have anything else for Mike on any other topics?
I've no.
No, Mike, do you have anything for us?
The only thing is, is I'm still working on the comprehensive plan. I just want to let you know, I was, been trying to get the transportation element to you, but what I'm running into and, and what I'm taking more time on is I've been reading a lot of literature about transportation and there are some projections in the next ten to fifteen years, most new cars that are sold will either be automated or electric or, or some type of car, not like the gas guzzlers that we have today. And we need to start in our comp plan talking about how we're going to address those, I, I, I'm just recently the city and Puget Pacific Power put in some power stations over there by the park. You know, we probably need to look at putting some more of those, especially in the freeway commercial zones and stuff, so people can come in and plug in and and, you know, go to a restaurant or something. But I think we need to address those in the comprehensive plan, so it's going to be a little bit more detailed than I had originally thought about.
In the month or two those have been in, has there been anyone that's actually?
I, I, I couldn't tell you because Pacific Power actually does that, I know downtown Yakima, not too far from my, where I used to work, the office there. They had four of them and there was cars in those all the time. So, I mean, maybe not today we'll see that, but I think in ten to fifteen years you'll see that being the norm. Charging stations and those type of things, one, a lot of the discussions about automated vehicles where, you know, you just sit there, you don't have to drive, you can call or, or, and it'll actually be a driverless car that comes and picks you up. All those things need to kind of look at, because maybe we need to look at our road designs and our other things that maybe instead of building a big wide roads, we buy, build narrow roads and more sidewalks and more connectors. The Yakima Valley Conference of Governments is looking at a transit system throughout the county. People for people have just started a route basically from Mapton Grandview to Sunnyside. And they're seeing their ridership slowly going up now that people know that it's there. So there's things that are changing that I think we need to really address in our comprehensive plan. That's the only comments I have at this time.
Okay. Looks like we've got our next regular meeting set for January twelfth, that's good for me, is it good for the other commissioners?
That's fine.
It's good.
Because I know.
Okay, we can adjourn this meeting, it is six twenty-three. And everyone have a good night.
Have a good holidays.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.